Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first video televised city council meeting. So I would hope that you would bear with us because this is going to be new because we have people remotely calling in. And we have three of us here on the dais who are practicing the social distancing. So if if things aren't as smooth as they normally are, please forgive us. And depending upon the the amount of time that we need to do this. We will be practicing good hygiene habits and social distancing to make sure that we are protecting ourselves as well as the staff who need to continue on a daily basis. So with that, I would like to call this meeting to order of the March 18th, 2020, meeting of the Los Vanos City Council. And Commander Hedden, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our meeting is going to be a little different tonight because we have a an emergency agenda item. The resolution of the city council of the city of Los Vanos ratifying the Director of Emergency Services proclamation of the existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Vanos, COVID-19. And we'll be doing at some point an update on the city efforts regarding COVID-19. So why are we doing it this way? Since the agenda was posted on March 12th, the landscape has changed dramatically concerning federal, state, and local actions concerning COVID-19. Specifically, the declaration of the President of the United States of the national emergency on the same date, a declaration of local emergency by both the County of Merced and the local health officer and the Director of Emergency Services. On March 17th, 2020, the city manager as the city's Director of Emergency Services proclaimed a local emergency. The city manager's actions must be ratified by the city council within seven days. Staff is requesting immediate action and adoption of the resolution and the need to take action came to the attention of the local agencies subsequent to the agenda being posted. So I'm reading that paragraph to kind of explain, we've done this once before. And so our option tonight is we need a four fifths vote of the city council in order to ratify this item. So at this time, I would ask the city council, and I would make a motion, that we approve the resolution of the city council of the city of Los Vanos ratifying the Director of Emergency Services proclamation of the existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Vanos, COVID-19. And do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You're just voting to place that item on the agenda?
Place the item on the agenda for first.
For consideration after the public?
Correct. Okay, so in order to place this on the agenda, I should explain a little bit further. In order to place this on the agenda, we need a four fifths vote in order to amend the agenda. And then we will play, we will place it after if this is approved by four fifths. And we have four council members present tonight. So this is just for the placement, okay? I would make that motion for placement. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have Mrs. Lewis who is teleconferencing and calling in. And so Mrs. Lewis has seconded the motion. So motion by the mayor, second by Mrs. Lewis for the placement on the agenda. And I would ask for a roll call vote.
Maria Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta?
Yes.
Yes, okay, we have a four out of four people present, which qualifies us to place this on the agenda. I would now ask that before we approve the agenda, I would like to place it as the new number six after the public forum. So it would be one through five would be left alone, and I would place it as the new number six. Then consideration of approval of consent agenda would be the new seven. Public hearing would be eight. I'll go through this. Number nine would be city council resolution 6188. Number, the new 10 would be California Public Employees Retirement System, CAL-PERS. Number, the new number 11 be advisement of public notices, one report. The new number 12 would be city managers' report. The new number 13 would be report update Merced County Association of Governments, MCAAG, Measure V Committee. The new number 14 would be city council member reports. And new number 15 would be closed session. And 16 would be adjournment. So with that, I would now like to ask City Clerk Maloney. Director Maloney, would you please call the roll?
Maria Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Present.
Lewis?
Mrs. Lewis, present for Mrs. Lewis, okay? And yes, I'm here, okay? So we have four out of five, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda, amended agenda, adding the new number six, the resolution that we spoke about, the existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Vanos, COVID-19. Do I have a motion? Okay, is your button pushed? Did you push it? Okay, we're not, I'm just, wait, let me go here. Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as stated with the new addition of number six.
Mr. Jones?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Santos, second by Mr. Jones to place the, to approve the new amended agenda and the consideration of the approval of agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Lewis? Aye. Okay, vote is, okay, let it, let the record read that the vote was unanimous of the four people here. Okay, now let's go on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Director Maloney, anyone online?
We have quite a few people watching online, but no comments.
Okay. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level. And we will now go to the new number six. Declaration of Director of Emergency Services proclamation of an existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Vanos, COVID-19. Okay, and we're going to go to our city manager. Alex?
Thank, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The council was provided a staff report regarding this item at your, at the dais. And the staff report and resolutions were also posted to the website. And in your staff report are copies of the proclamation that I, as the emergency services manager, approved, as well as a proposed proclamation for your consideration this evening. So we're recommending, or the staff is recommending that the council ratify the proclamation that that I made as the city manager and emergency services manager declaring the existence of a local emergency. This, this provides the city the ability to to use the appropriate resources and funding that we have available to ensure an appropriate response to the COVID-19 pandemic here in California and in our city. Proclamation does not signify an increased risk to the community. And it certainly is not a reason to to panic. But what it really does for the future is provides us the opportunity to seek reimbursement for any costs the city might have as we move forward with the management of this of this incident. And it gives us the ability to coordinate with the county, the state, and the federal government in our response. We've taken a number of actions to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We've geared up our emergency operations center. We've adjusted our operations at all of our public counters, including here at city hall. So we, we feel at this point we are responding in line with the public health department and and working in coordination very closely with the public health department. I did want to give the fire chief an opportunity to update the council and the community and what our activities have been. The fire chief is serving as the EOC manager. So Mason is is deeply involved in our response and coordinated effort with our, with our partners in in this situation. So, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay, I'd like to turn it over to to Mason for an update.
Wonderful, wonderful. I'll keep both your mics open because I want, I want both of you if you need to comment.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ox. Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for having, having this item on on the agenda tonight. It's extremely important to us as a, as a staff and for the city as well as the public. Just wanted to give a brief update in regarding what we've been doing as we've opened the EOC and even prior to. We have been actively involved, working with the county, Department of Public Health, emergency services to get ahead of this issue and provide public ed, as much public education and prepare ourselves for this situation regarding COVID-19. So as of March 12th, the city of Los Vanos opened the emergency operations center. You may hear it as the EOC in a level three level. That is the lowest, lowest level in regards to activation. That allows us to continue to communicate with the Merced County EOC office and OES to to make sure that our messages are clear and provide and and get information so we can provide the best service possible. We, we have been networking with local hospitals, school district, local businesses, church groups, networking with the elderly facilities in in our community, really trying to reach out to everybody that we can to to let them know that there is public education out there, there is a lot of information to help keep them safe, giving them guidelines to remain, to keep the social distancing as as prominent as possible. Doing, by doing that, we've, we've done that tonight. And regarding maintaining social distancing here in the, in the council chambers, we've, we've taken the action of closing the community center in order to maintain that social distancing, adjusted hours at city hall, local lobbies in regards to fire station, police stations, public works, facilities. And and bottom line is, we have been, we're very engaged in the public, public information. We've been placing a lot of information on our local Facebook pages. There are links on our website that will lead you to local information as well as information through the county, county EOC, Merced County Emergency Services, as well as the Department of Public Health, that will provide you guidelines brought down through the CDC to help spread the message, to make sure that we take care of ourselves. And I will say it over and over again, one of the best things we can do is social, keep ourselves out of groups. If you're sick, stay home. If you, if you have, everything you do, continue to wash your hands, keep your hands and hands away from your face. And also clean the surfaces around you. We want to make sure not only to wash our hands all the time, but clean the surfaces that you work around or the other public, other people are touching. That surface can hold the virus for a while, so we want to make sure we continue to clean that surfaces in order, in order to take care of ourselves. So so please, as the, as a fire chief and as the, the EOC manager, I really, I take this very serious. Our staff has been working extremely hard to prepare ourselves and educate. And I just want to say thank you for bringing this item forward. And we're hoping to continue to move forward, and we will provide the best service we can. We will continue to keep the continuity of government and our normal services as normal as possible. But we will be addressing this issue very seriously. Thank you.
Mason, part of the, the, the Facebook comments were that that people wanted me to address, and I didn't want to do that other than to say that we have to do this to keep government running and to make sure that if there are any reimbursements later on for all the extra efforts and supplies, equipment, time, time spent, anything that we need to buy, that we get in line for reimbursement. Is that a pretty fair statement?
Absolutely, yes. It's a, it's extremely, extremely correct. It is a, it's part of the emergency operations up and down the state. It's, it's why we do this, it's why we work hand in hand with the Office of Emergency Services and in regards to mutual aid and and also providing aid as we continue back to us. Because we are working hard and there is a lot of time and there are a lot of resources to make sure that we, we take care of what we're, our community.
Okay, and also for the public out there listening, there are other questions that came up about senior citizens, about food supply, about homeless. All these things at some point are being addressed. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We, like I said, stated earlier, we have made, we have really pushed out in the last week, even prior to that, reaching out to as many social groups, as many individuals, single individuals, everybody to to pass on the information, pass on the education to help keep them safe. And in the elderly facilities, we, we've reached out to them quite a while, and they are taking offensive action to make sure that the residents in their communities are being safe. So we are, it's nice to know that they are taking it serious as well.
And you know, if, if, if you think that there is an area that hasn't been addressed, but it will be public, you know, you're free to call into our police department or our fire department or city hall and ask about a concern, and then we can hopefully post some information and get back to you. The, the, the police chief has been in contact with all the retail stores, in fact, both chiefs. And, and they, they are trying to make sure that the flow of, of goods and services still continue in Los Vanos. And so far, it has. But you have to remember, there was enough food for everyone before this pandemic was occurred. And now with the hoarding and people buying so much and 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 creating shortages, that's the reason for the shortage. It's not the shortage of the supplies. It's people buying an inordinate amount and then having some of those things go bad or or not having to use them later on. So, I mean, are, Mason, can you address that too?
Yeah, I will, I will say that you are correct. People, people have taken this to a, to a level of extreme buying. And our local businesses that we have reached out to, we've reached out to all the major businesses in town. And they are working very hard to keep things on the, on the shelf. They're working hard to main, to so we can maintain abilities so they can continue to stay open. They're, they're working very hard and coming up with some really good plans to to keep that happening for them. They are actively engaged in making sure that they stay open for our public. Just, just regards to comments about taking extra, that kind of stuff. What, what I ask is that we, we take action, we take offensive, we take offensive action to take care of ourselves, maintain that social distancing, but do it not only for yourself, do it for your family, do it for your neighbor. Take care of yourself, which will, which will in, in turn, take care of the others around you.
Well, in, in these trying times, people are going to judge us by our actions after this is ended. And, and for right now, you know, we, with, with all the contacts between the city manager, all the department heads, the fire and the police chief, emergency services, police department, fire department, we're going to go about our daily lives as much as we possibly can. And the actions that we take are going to be based on the actions that we need to take. But for right now, this local emergency that we're declaring is nothing new. It's not any cause for panic. It's not a reason to go out and buy. It's, all it is, is to ensure that even after this pandemic has reached its, its height and it starts to decrease and is finally over, that we have a city left that's going to be a functioning city afterwards. And, and part of these emergency procedures and what we're doing and the actions that are taking place by our, our great leadership are the things that we need to do. So don't read any more into it. I, I can't say anymore. I can't, I can't put it any other way. Don't read any more into it. If you have a medical emergency, you call us. If you need police assistance, you call us. Everything is still functioning, but maintain those social distances so we can get this over with as soon as possible. I, I, I want to ask if there's any other council member that would like to make any comments at this time? Yes, I, I'm going to have to use the, so just wave to me.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to staff and everyone. I know I had a few questions about things that we're doing in town. And every time, every question I had, you guys said that you're on it and working with it. So I want to say thank you very much about being, losing sleep and working on this, though. Thank you very much. That's just my comment, Mayor.
Thank you, Veronica. Mr. Jones, anything?
No comments.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Lewis, any comment? Mrs. Lewis?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis, thank you. Okay, and you know, the vulnerable population, the young children who who are infants, who need these baby wipes, who who need supplies that they can't get, we need to share these supplies as much as we can. The senior citizens, we are working on plans for them to make sure that, that adequate supplies are going to be, be able to purchase those. And they should have a plan coming out soon. I'm not going to, I'm not, what I mean by soon, don't hold me to a date. But, but we are, but, but the city manager and all the emergency operations are working on that to make sure that, that people are going to be able to purchase adequately of all ages. And that our, another vulnerable population is our homeless, that, what we can do for them. But remember, everything that we do, it can be judged in everyone's eyes that it's never going to be enough. And so we all have to take care of ourselves in these trying times and, and make sure that we take care of our family. We be socially conscious and we just be nice. And that's all I can say and pray. Anything else to add, Mason?
Uh, real quick, I do want to say, there's a couple of different options for getting updated information. There, on the county website as well as the city website, there is a, as you, as you hit the link regarding COVID-19, there's a link that you can register your email and your phone number or your, your email and your name. And you will get up-to-date information from the county, public health and CDC, as well as the city of Los Vanos has set up an email for, as, for information. If you have a question, please email us. We, we want to get you the proper information in regarding what we're doing, how, and how we're doing it and how we're doing with the situation. We're happy to reply to you and have a conversation. And that email is EOC info- And that email is EOCinfo@losbanos.org. EOCinfo@losbanos.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mason, at some point, is, and, and I don't know, this, this is all on time permits. You know, because, because of hand sanitizers and things that are, that are not readily available, is, is there something that we can do to, for alternatives to tell, uh, people, uh, how to, how to, you know, make some of these, these home sanitizers?
There is info on the, on the websites in regards to alternatives, in regards to like, uh, adding a, a solution, a bleach and water that can work. And, and if there's anybody that wants to know that information, by all means, please, uh, email us and we can get that to you. The proper amounts.
Okay, so out there, if, if you have, if you don't have readily available hand sanitizer or, uh, access to some kind of sanitary wipes, there's information on the county's website, is that correct?
Through, through the, through the links, there's, there's best practices and, um, options and things that you can use to help educate you regarding cleaning and preparing yourself and keeping yourself, to help sanitize the, your surface. In regards to your hands, um, I would suggest to continuously wash your hands with soap and water. We want, the hand sanitizer is fantastic. It, it, it makes a great big, big difference, but continuous, continuous, continuous washing your hands is a priority that will wash that off and, and you can keep moving forward.
Okay, and as far as, as before you do that, it, what about touching hands and face? And, because I've heard a lot about that.
Yeah, limit it as much as possible, the, the handshakes and the, and the hugs. And we want to reduce that for a little while, you know, everyone, everyone wants to be social. We want to reduce as much possible. Please, uh, remember if you constantly, if you can, reduce, uh, reduce the amount of time you touch your face, your nose, your mouth. It's hard, it's hard to do. And if you consciously think about it, uh, you'll be amazed how often it happens. So that's why it's so important that we do wash our hands and keep the surfaces around us safe.
And, and as an alternate, I know I'm asking some questions, but this was our time to kind of get out, get some information out. As an alternate, uh, if people go through drive-throughs, that's still, uh, an accepted practice?
We haven't heard anything different from that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so if people need something, they can always go through a drive-through and, and pick up something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fantastic, fantastic. Anything else that you or Gary would like to communicate?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments, if I may?
Go.
We do, we are getting a few questions. We have over a hundred viewers on Facebook Live, believe it or not. So, uh, thank you for, for tuning in on Facebook. Uh, and we are receiving, receiving a number of questions. Uh, we will do our best to respond to those questions on the PD's Facebook page. So we should be getting back to those questions over the next couple of days. Uh, it might take us a little while, but we, we will do our best to respond to those questions. Um, and I think we said it a couple of times tonight perhaps, but, uh, the PD's Facebook page is where we will be pushing out information. Uh, we've started to push out a number of pieces on that, on that page. Um, I would suggest that members of our community and residents follow that very closely. This is a rapidly changing situation, literally by the hour, if not by the half hour and minute. So, um, the best source of local information, uh, for us as Los Banos residents will be the PD's Facebook page. So, uh, please follow us there. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and just understand people that, that, that a lot of these questions are going to be similar in nature. They may be worded differently, but, but, uh, as, uh, as our city manager said, we're going to do our best to answer these questions. But a lot of them will have to lump together i- in, in an answer instead of answering each individual question that will give you kind of generic information in that category. Would that be pretty?
Uh, ye- yes. And, and my, my other recommendation to, to folks would be the, um, the Centers for Disease Control website, um, as well as the California Department of Public Health. Uh, a lot of good information there on personal practices, best practices for cleaning, sanitizing your home, personal hygiene. Uh, so in addition to the PD's Facebook page, uh, those two websites, again, Centers for Disease, Disease Control and California Department of Public Health, two great online resources, um, available 24/7.
As a final comment, we are really lucky, and I'm going to tell you why. And that is because we have a great relationship with the school district, the school district administrator, the school board, and also the hospital administration and the hospital administrator. They are in constant contact with, with our people. And, uh, it's, it's absolutely wonderful to have this kind of cooperation and not people going off in their own directions. Everyone is working towards the same goal, and that same goal is to, to defeat this virus. So the hospital has their procedures, the city has their procedures, the school district has their procedures. And I will tell you that because school is out, please keep your children home, your students home. And don't, don't, this is not a time for socialization, as someone said, to, to go out and, and to do social activities as a group. Do things as a family in your home. It's called shelter in place because I don't think we want to get to the point where Fresno, where they have a shelter in place, uh, uh, not mandatory, but they're asking people to do that. Without doing something formally, this council is asking that you shelter in place and do things with your family. Do them at home. And if you need to venture out, you need to venture out for supplies or you need to venture out if you're going to get takeout. I mean, this is not a time to be out and about. You want to limit your activities as much as you can. I mean, that's all I can say. Just please, limit your activities. Let's get rid of this thing. Let's defeat it. And the way we're going to defeat it is by following those best practices. Contact us if you need to, please. Thank you. Thank you all. So with that, we have our new number six, which is, uh, the existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Banos, COVID-19. We received our update. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mrs. Santos, I'm going to leave your mic on. Would you say that a little louder for me, please?
I, I will make the motion. I'm making the motion to adopt resolution number 6190.
Okay. Do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Santos, second by Jones for the adoption of the existence of a local emergency within the city of Los Banos, COVID-19. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Mrs. Lewis is an aye also. Uh, unanimous.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. And again, this is somewhat awkward because she is calling in, uh, and, uh, and, but there is a little bit of a delay, but, but we will make it work as the best we can. Okay? Let's go on to the new number seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be readied and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have?
Um, items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 220702 through 220948 in the amount of $1,112,594.14 minutes for the March 4th, 2020 city council meeting. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Thank you. Is there any city council member on the dais or, uh, calling in that would like to remove an item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Santos, second by Jones, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. Okay, got it. Okay, uh, unanimous vote, Mrs. Lewis is also an aye. Okay, let's go on to, uh, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or had written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing, to receive public comment, consideration of a statutory exemption of SEQA pursuant to section 15061 subsection B.3. General rule, and to consider adding Article 36, Chapter 3, Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to reasonable accommodation. Ordinance number 1181, adding Article 46 to, uh, to Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to reasonable accommodation. This is a first reading and introduction, and so we're going to go to Director Elms.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Uh, there's a PowerPoint presentation with this particular item.
Okay. One, two, three. Okay?
Okay. So this item is, um, being brought before you as it is an implementation goal of our housing element, which I will get into. Just a little bit of background, federal and state housing laws prohibit discrimination in housing against individuals with disabilities. These laws require that cities take affirmative action to eliminate regulations and practices that deny housing opportunities to disabled individuals. And this includes requiring flexibility in the application of land use and zoning regulations, which I'm going to give you examples in a few slides. As I said, this is necessary for compliance with our housing element. The 2014-23 Housing Element, which is the fifth cycle, sets forth policy 5B that requires the establishment and implementation of a reasonable accommodation ordinance. Program implementation just demonstrates to the Department of Housing and Community Development in the state of California that the city is in compliance with our housing element. Um, and then later on tonight, we do have a Housing Element Annual Progress Report, which completion of this ordinance is, um, important to show to the state of California. The proposed ordinance, um, before you tonight establishes a formal procedure for persons with disabilities seeking equal access to housing to request reasonable accommodation in the application of the city's land use regulations and establishes criteria to be used when considering such requests. It provides the city with procedures and criteria to provide persons with disabilities the relief in zoning, permit procedures, and building laws. They may prohibit opportunities for housing. An application request, uh, that we would receive within the Community and Economic Development Department must have a disability, so someone applying for this must have a disability that is defined and protected under federal and state housing law. There are two categories of disability. First is, uh, one is physical and then also there is mental. The applicant is not required to identify the nature of their, the severity of their disability, but they do have to tell us, um, as a part of our checklist, um, what the disability is. The protected disability can be met by describing the use of the dwelling. So for instance, if, um, they need a wheelchair ramp and they're requesting a ramp, we know that the disability is consistent with they have a wheelchair. And the licensed residential care facility, this could be an example for a licensed residential care facility, homes for transitional age youth with disabilities, or sober living home for those in recovery. Those are just examples of ways that a reasonable accommodation could be used. Uh, this would be reviewed and approved by the Community and Economic Development Director. The proposed ordinance establishes criteria and procedures for the request for a reasonable accommodation. It establishes several requirements that are applicable to reasonable accommodations such as documentation of the disability, specific exception or modification to the zoning code, and other information that the Community and Economic Development Director requires to make that determination. There is an appeal procedure, um, written in for reasonable accommodation decisions. And it establishes findings that the Community Economic Development Director must make to determine whether to grant or deny a requested accommodation, which is consistent with the fair housing laws of the federal government and the state of California. So some examples of, uh, reasonable accommodation requests could be a relief from setback requirements. Like I said before, it could be, um, for instance, a wheelchair ramp in a rear yard needs to encroach in the 10-foot rear yard setback requirement. Through this ordinance, we'd be able to provide relief to accommodate that ramp. It could accommodate fence height restrictions, some flexibility there when a greater privacy is necessary for a person with a disability to use and enjoy the outdoors at a residence. An example of this could be someone, um, that is maybe visually impaired and has, um, a sensitivity to noise and needs an extra noise barrier. Another example is parking. Uh, this would be for the use of a vehicle where the height of the vehicle is prohibited, prohibiting from the use of the garage or space at the home. So it may need to exceed the, um, height maximum within the zoning district because they have a van, um, for, um, disabled accessibility. So those are just examples. Staff will be reviewing these on a case by case and as they come in, and using the checklist that will be provided within the ordinance. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council open the public hearing and close the public hearing, and then waive the first reading and introduce ordinance number 1181 to add Article 46 to Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to reasonable accommodation. And that concludes my report. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do I have any questions of council members and online of, uh, Mrs. Ms. Elms, Mrs. Elms, before I open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is Councilmember Lewis, I do have some questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, Stacy, on those last three areas of relief that you were talking about, um, number one, in the setback, if, if a house is already built and the, and the setback is already, uh, established with the home and the fencing, how does that work out? I'm not quite sure how that fits, um, with this particular requirement.
So the request would need to be, um, as a part of a building permit or some sort of relief from the zoning code. So if it's, um, an accessory type of use, which a wheelchair ramp would be, it's not the primary dwelling. Um, it would be an accessory, um, use to the primary dwelling. We could provide relief to accommodate, um, that specific use, to accommodate that disability. Does that answer your question?
I, I guess what I'm trying to find out, if, if a dwelling is already established and fencing is already established, someone's moving into an existing home. When you say give relief, are you saying that the ramp turned being right next to the fence and it doesn't have to have specific setbacks?
It could encroach into a specific setback. So a rear yard setback would be an example, or even a front yard setback. If they need access to their front yard, their front door, excuse me, and they need, um, some relief, we would be able to accommodate that. And by law, we are required to accommodate that disability.
Okay, and then in the fencing height, you gave an example that if somebody had a visual impairment or sensitive to noise that you can give relief. But I, I'm not quite sure what that means in regards to the height of the fence. Are you saying that the height of the fence could be higher or it could be lower? You know, exactly what does this mean?
No, it could be higher. So there's a maximum height restrictions and, which is seven feet currently. And with a reasonable accommodation, that could be maximized. Obviously, staff would though, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So what would be the, the maximum height beyond the seven feet?
It would be based on the accommodation being requested and staff would analyze the reasonability of the request.
Okay, so if somebody asks for a 10-foot fence, is, is that something that the city would be, uh, considered to be reasonable?
We would review it on a case by case and depend We would review it on a case-by-case, and depending on the disability would determine what is reasonable. I wouldn't be able to tell you what that max is until I had an actual case in front of me to, to determine. We'd probably use studies, and we may even need to verify with a noise analysis. Staff would analyze, though, to verify that the accommodation is reasonable, not only to the requesting party, but also to the neighborhood.
Okay, because that, you know, the way it's written and the way I hear you interpret it to me, it sounds like the height of a fence could be infinity, whatever someone's requesting, and of course, staff has to evaluate if it's reasonable, but I guess I, I would think that there should be some limit at some point where a fence is way too high in a neighborhood, and to accommodate a person's disability, you know, whether they have noise sensitivity or whatever the case may be, is reasonable. But then, you know, I, I would want to, you know, bring forward the idea that we also have to consider the other neighbors surrounding that person, and, and not have something so out of proportion that it just would devalue everybody else's residential property. And then lastly, the parking, when it says the applicant may seek special parking exemptions for the use of a vehicle where the height of the vehicle is per, is prohibited from them using their garage space. So I guess, I know we have in our city code right now issues about certain heights of vehicles that could be in a backyard, and, you know, only one of this, and only so many vehicles, but if they can't get in the garage, where else would they put it other than a driveway or on the street? What other accommodations are you looking at?
No, that was just an example to exceed, say, a height limit on a garage so that they could park their van within. It's not anticipated that we would need to make other accommodations, although I could think of maybe an example where they may need extra space in their driveway for van accessibility, and maybe need it widened beyond possibly the 50%, and if it is reasonable, maybe it's an additional five feet. Staff would take that consideration.
Okay, so with that, if a vehicle is a certain length in a driveway and it exceeds beyond the approach or sidewalk, is that going to be an exemption for accommodation?
No, that would not be giving relief. That would not be a reasonable accommodation to provide relief. It needs to be a zoning setback in particular, so it needs to be a zoning requirement or a building permit requirement. It is not to provide encroachment into the public right-of-way, nor is it to bypass ADA requirements of the sidewalk.
Okay, so in, in the cases where some of these newer homes that are being built in Los Angeles have very short runways up to the garage from the approach, if the vehicle cannot be accommodated in the garage or on the driveway because it sticks out beyond the public right-of-way, then the, the only alternative that they would have, I would assume, is be able to park it kitty-cornered if it will fit in their driveway or on the public street?
Yes, in that example.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. We've adjusted the mic, and you are now in, in, in full bloom with your voice.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Are there any more questions from council before I open the public hearing? All right, I would now like to open to public hearing to receive comment in consideration of the statutory exemption SEQA pursuant to Section 15061, Subsection B.3, General Rule, and to consider adding Article 36 to Chapter 3, Title IX of the Los Angeles Municipal Code relating to reasonable accommodation. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Director Maloney, are we good?
I've received your comments through the City Court at West Vanderstraer.
Thank you. At this time, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and we have two actions. We are going to waive the first reading, and then we're going to vote on the introduction. So, who would like to, to do that?
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh. You can second, Mrs. Lewis. Okay, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to waive the first reading of ordinance Number 1181.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned by Santos, seconded by Lewis, for the, to waive the first reading of ordinance Number 1181. All in favor? Aye. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, and now, Mrs. Santos?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance Number 1181.
Oh, no, no, for the introduction.
Oh, excuse me, introduce ordinance Number 1181.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, and it's, and Mrs. Santos has now made the motion for the introduction of ordinance Number 1181, and it is seconded by Mrs. Lewis. Roll call, vote. Director Maloney?
For real? Johnson-Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Lewis?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion carried unanimously. All right, let's go on to B, Public Hearing, to receive public comment in consideration of statutory exemption to SEQA pursuant to Section 15061, Subsection B.3, General Rule, and to amend Chapter 3, Title IX of the Municipal Code as it relates to removing barriers for development of supportive and transitional housing, emergency shelters, and single-room occupancies in accordance with state housing element law. And Ordinance Number 1182, amending Title IX, Chapter 3 of the Los Angeles Municipal Code regarding emergency shelters, supportive and transitional housing, and single-room occupancy units. And this, again, this is the waiving of the first reading and the introduction, and we are going to go to who? The city attorney?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Ms. Lewis at home, and rest of you watching at home. This is the second zoning code action you have tonight, and it's along the lines of dealing with some of the state housing shortage, and so I'll just jump right into it, I have limited time. This ordinance is designed to comply with SB 2, and also to comply with our current housing element. SB 2 was adopted by the legislature some time back, and it dealt with emergency shelters, transitional and supportive housing. What we're doing tonight is just doing a zoning code amendment. We are not creating an emergency shelter or transitional or supportive housing. We're setting up our zoning code to allow for that, and the allowance for that is pretty much dictated by the language of SB 2, which comes down from the state legislature. After SB 2, we adopted a housing element, and the housing element, one of the, one of the principles of the housing element was for us to comply with SB 2 in terms of our emergency shelter, transitional housing, supportive housing, and single-room occupancy units. So I'm going to go through a couple of definitions with you, but first of all, why are we doing this? It's very important, number one, to be in compliance with state law, which currently our code does not match state law when state law is the default, so we want our code to match what the state law is. Secondly, we want to be consistent with the requirements of our own housing element, which is part of our general plan, and there, there are some of the reasons why we want to be consistent with our housing element, and mostly it's all about funding. If we're not consistent with our housing element, we jeopardize our state funding for certain grants and so on and so forth. You might have read recently that the state of California, well, in the past, the state of California has been fairly lax in enforcing housing element compliance. Now, that's no longer the case. The state of California is going to be very aggressive with local jurisdictions in enforcing housing element compliance, and to the extreme of potentially suing cities for not complying with their own housing element. So we definitely don't want to get into that situation. The major requirements of SB 2 are right there, and basically SB 2 requires that we set aside at least one district within the city that would allow for emergency shelters without a conditional use permit or any other discretionary permit. It would be an over-the-counter administrative permit based on criteria adopted by the city within their ordinance to streamline the process for emergency shelters. The other thing it does is, in terms of supportive and transitional housing, which I will define those for you in a minute, it dictates that supportive and transitional housing is a residential use for all purposes, and anywhere in the city that we have residential, residential use zoning, we must allow supportive and transitional housing by right, which means they would simply have to build a, pull a building permit, build or move into an existing house, and start their transitional supportive housing, and they are not required to have any other discretionary permitting through the city. So it's just like if I wanted to build a house in a residential area, I don't have to go through a conditional use permit or any other discretionary permitting, as long as I'm in compliance with the building permit codes, I can, I can go forward. And that's kind of the idea here, is that these things are usually cited in a residential type structure in any event, and so the state of California has dictated that, in fact, for the purposes of transitional and supportive housing, it is a residential use. So this isn't something that the city is going out and designing itself, this is coming down from the state of California through SB 2, and that's...
But let me interrupt you. You can't go willy-nilly, though. Everything has to meet building codes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't because we're not opening a...
No, 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 so the transitional or supportive housing has to meet all of the requirements that have to be met within that zone. It just means that because it's not your traditional family dwelling, for instance, or your traditional duplex, or your traditional apartment, that you don't, it's, it's a use by right, and you don't have to go through some other process to have that use within that zone. But you have to meet all of the other requirements of whatever zone you're doing this in.
But you can't build an apartment complex in R1.
No.
No. That's, that's what we need to tell people.
But you can build, you can have a transitional supportive housing unit in a R1 zone.
Yeah, yeah. You just can't put a multi-story, yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, so I just wanted to throw out what the definitions are. Well, let me go back real quick, because I'm, I don't have a lot of time here tonight. I just wanted to quote for you the two housing element, things that we're trying to support and comply with tonight, and they're listed there at the bottom, it's specifically 8H and 8F. Our own housing element is, is directing us to, to do this with supportive and transitional housing as well as a single occupancy housing. So that's, that's what's pushing this tonight, is the compliance with our, with our housing element. So what is an emergency shelter? Emergency shelter is a place where typically homeless folks are, are housed or given shelter. Typically, it's very, up to now, it's been very short on services, and it's just basically a place to sleep, a roof over your head, shower, those kinds of things. So that's what emergency housing is, and a reason I put that up there is to contrast it with supportive and transitional housing. Now, having said that, you'll notice later on in the, in the presentation that we've developed significant criteria that emergency shelter will have to follow. What is transitional housing? Transitional housing is more of a temporary-type housing, and it's in, usually in a residential setting, and it's usually complemented with services to the residences, the residents in the housing. It's typically, people know it as bridge housing or, or group homes type, type of living situation, and it's just designed for, to get people back on their feet, and get them going again, and try to move them into permanent housing. So that's what transitional housing is. Supportive housing is a little bit more intense, in that it is permanent housing for their residents, and is typically coupled with intensive services that are targeted at a particular group, could be those with substance abuse issues, those with mental health issues, but typically the providers of supportive housing are aiming at some type of target demographic to deal with in their supportive housing. So it's a permanent housing in terms of the resident is actually paying to live there based on ability to pay, and it is not temporary, and it could, it's basically permanent. So, and again, it, it's available in any residential zone within the city. And then the final one is single-room occupancy dwellings, and those, if you can picture it, are kind of hotels, essentially, which are, which are permanent housing as opposed to transient housing. So it's basically a single room with a bed, it could either have a combination of a partial kitchen or a partial bath. Typically, it has a community kitchen and a community bath within the facility, has very limited amenities. It's for those folks that are possibly, can't afford full-on apartment, it's a kind of, it's not a rooming house, but you'll see them mainly in the older hotels in the bigger cities where there's a single-room occupancy dwelling with very limited amenities for the tenants, and they're permanent, they are permanent housing. And our housing element is requiring us to allow this in our R3 zone. I don't believe we've had an application for a single-room occupancy facility probably in the 15 years that I've been city attorney, and I don't think that this ordinance is going to create a pent-up demand for that. So the, the proposed ordinance does a couple things. In terms of emergency shelters, it, it allows a, well, currently, right now, unbeknownst to me when I first started writing this ordinance, is emergency shelters are allowed by right in the R2 and R3 zones currently, and with a CUP, conditional use permit, in the R1 zone. And I think that was, I noticed the history of that ordinance is about 12 or 13 years old, and I believe it was to accommodate that type of shelter housing in our local churches and those types of institutions, which are typically located in the R1, R2, R3 areas. The housing element is only requiring us to make it available in one zone within the city, but staff discussed this quite at length and decided that, frankly, the industrial zone is a better zone for this type of housing, and it's based on its proximity to the rail trail, based on its proximity to other services. So we, we, in this zoning code amendment, we are suggesting that the, through a conditional use permit, that we expand the places that you can have one of these to the industrial zones, and that's where we think people will be interested in opening something like this, just because of the, the, the size of those lots in the, in the industrial zoning, and it's a little bit more neighborhood-friendly. So staff decided that through a CUP process, although because we already have an at-right process in the, in the R2 and R3 districts, that we should add it to our industrial zone as well. It also then goes on to list some objective criteria. There are too many to go through tonight, they are in the ordinance, and they're in your staff report, but these are kind of the highlights of what you're allowed to do in terms of criteria, in terms of the maximum number of beds, off-street parking, those kinds of things. We've dealt with all of those things within your proposed ordinance. Based on the time I've allotted tonight, unless you have a question about any one of those... of those, suffice it to say, those are vetted by staff and went through the planning commission process. And it was staff's recommendation that we have put together criteria that are reasonable and don't discourage this type of facility, but make sure we protect the surrounding neighborhoods as well.
Right. You've answered mine seven and eight with security and lighting.
Ooh, what happened? Oh, there we go. So, oh, I'm getting a blank, I'm getting a blink. On my PowerPoint. So I'm gonna go back.
Blink as in someone's gonna get a hook and drag you off?
Yeah, I think so. Because I was given 10 minutes. Have I exceeded that?
Counsel says no, staff says yes.
Well, good. I'm glad you're interested. It was the slide before that it skipped. So I can, I can just address that one. It's, that slide is about what the proposed ordinance does in terms of supportive and transitional housing. And what it did was we essentially just changed the zoning code in the R one, R two, R three, and MX, the mixed use zone, to allow for that type of use. So that was essentially the only, the only change we made to the zoning code regarding supportive and transitional housing, other than defining them and we, you know, as the state defines those. And then finally, the single room occupancy units. Again, the, the housing element requires us to allow for it in the R three district with a CUP. We've done that. So you'll see in the code, it lists single room occupancy units under the R three as a use by right. And then we have a standalone set of criteria for single, single room occupancy units such as their size, they can only have a maximum of two residents per each room. They have to be permanent. They're not like a motel room where someone checks in for five days and checks out. It has to be a permanent tenancy of 30 days or more. They have to have management on site.
Twenty-four hour management?
Yes. They have to have a management plan. There are some other criteria I'm trying to think of as we speak. If they don't have partial kitchens, they have to have a full kitchen based on the number of units for a full kitchen, for a community kitchen, and the same thing with restrooms. So these are not meant to be an apartment. They're meant to be something much less than an apartment. And like I said, you see them, they're quite common in the bigger cities, San Francisco. San Diego has a huge single room occupancy population because they have some very big old, older hotels. It usually is looking for clientele that are maybe older with not a lot of resources are usually the residents of these places.
But we will be regulating these.
Yes, they will be in the R three district pursuant to a conditional use permit. So they're not an over the counter use. They would have to come to the planning commission and they would have to meet all of the criteria.
Very good.
So the recommendation is to waive the first reading and introduce this, this ordinance. And I'm here to answer any questions.
All right. This is a public hearing, but do I have any, do I have any comments from counsel before I open the public hearing? All right. So what I'd like to do at this time, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Okay. Let me, let me open the public hearing, receive public comment, consideration statutory exemption to SEQA pursuant to section 15061 subsection B three, general rule and to amend chapter three, title nine, the municipal code as it relates to removing barriers and development of supportive transitional houses, emergency shelters, and single room occupancies in accordance with the state housing element law. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum? Director Maloney, anyone? Okay. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level. And we need two actions here to waive the first reading and for the introduction. So are there any other questions? Yes? Mrs. Lewis?
No, I, I, I don't have any other questions. It, it seems like this is a, in conjunction with the previous ordinance that we just passed to work hand in hand. So if no other council members have any questions, I'd like to move forward and make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number 1182 as read by title.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's motion by Lewis and second by Jones for the waiving of the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1182 as read by title.
Mr. Jones?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Jones for the introduction of 1181. Director Maloney?
Faria? Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis? Valalta?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously. All right? Oh, did I say, is it 1181 or 1182?
Two.
I'm sorry. Okay. Do we need to vote again, or can I just amend that? Okay. 1182. Want to make sure. All right. Thank you. Let's go on to public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of a general plan amendment that would update the housing element of Los Banos general plan pursuant to state law. City Council Resolution number 6187, adopting the 2019 annual report on the status of the housing element of the general plan and progress report in its implementation. And this is the action motion, and we're gonna go to Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This particular item is a annual requirement with our housing element. And tonight is the night of housing element. So this kind of just wraps it all up. This is a review of the progress we've made in 2019. And we're required by law annually to report on this at a public hearing with the city council. So government code requires us to do this annually, and it's due to the Department of Housing and Community Development by April 1st of each year. Statutes of the housing element were required to report on the status of our implementation, the progress we've made on RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and any actions that the city's taken towards completion of any of those programs. We're required to review and consider the city's legislative bodies. So this is required, like I said, to be done at a public hearing with the city council. And then we're required to submit that report to the Office of Planning and Research of the state of California as well as the Department of Housing and Community Development. Although it does not require their approval, we are just required to submit to those agencies, really for accountability. So the purpose of this annual progress report is to, number one, remain compliant with the government code and the housing element law. It's to update the city council on our housing development and implementation of the housing element. And then ensure eligibility for state grant funding. One such important funding is the community development block grants that are associated with our housing element as other though grant opportunities are as well. And more and more of state funding is now tied to the housing element. And then the proposed annual progress report ensures that the city will remain in compliance for future grant opportunities and state funding. If we miss the deadline for submittal, we could be in jeopardy of being in compliance with our housing element. So our productivity in 2019, excuse me, on my slide, it doesn't say Mariposa County. But for Merced and Merced County Association of Governments, which gives us our allocation of housing needs, the very low income, low income, we did not have any housing activity. We had moderate income and above moderate income within the year. Implementation, I'm just going to go briefly through these goals. I will not list all of them. But we're to provide adequate sites for residential development. We're to remove governmental constraints. We're to encourage the maintenance improvement and rehabilitation of our existing housing stock. We're to achieve energy efficiency in housing activities. We're to ensure that all residents have access to housing. We're to increase the percentage of homeownership. We're to maintain an adequate percentage of affordable rental units. And we're to encourage new development projects for special needs groups. So within the staff report is a table which has all of the goals and timelines that are associated with them and how we've accomplished those goals or the plan to achieve those goals within the cycle. Public notice was published in the Enterprise on March 6th. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution number 6187, adopting the 2019 annual housing element progress report. And that concludes my presentation. And I would ask that the council also open the public hearing and close the public hearing tonight before taking action. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any question from any of the council members at this time? Okay, I will now open the public hearing to receive public comment and consideration of the general plan amendment that would update the housing element of Los Banos general plan pursuant to state law. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Director Maloney?
I have received no comments.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and I will bring it back to council level. This is a simple action motion. City Council Resolution, Resolution number 6187 as read by title. Do I have a, a motion and a second? You're good.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 6187.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motion by Johnson Santos and second by Jones to approve city council resolution number 6187 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Consideration of approval of city council resolution number 6188, approving a compensation agreement between the city of Los Banos and other affected taxing entities pursuant to Health and Safety Code, section 34180 subsection F, as it pertains to the designated local authority, DLA, and the former Los Banos Redevelopment Agency, RDA, property interests. Okay? Oh. Good to see you again. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, Ms. Lewis at home and the rest of you at home watching. I'm gonna put that map up there for a few minutes for you to study while I'm giving a little bit of background on this item. This item is a little bit more exciting than the last two items, and I'll try to explain that. Back in 2011, as I think all of you know, but maybe people watching don't know, the state legislature and the governor, Governor Brown at the time dissolved local redevelopment agencies, some 400 plus within the state of California, I believe. And that process of winding down those redevelopment agencies has been going on for the last seven or eight or nine years. And the winding down of the Los Banos Redevelopment Agency is getting to kind of the ninth inning here. And we have some actions, an action to take tonight that will get us closer to having the redevelopment agency totally wound down and the city taking back some of the properties of the former redevelopment agency. When, when the redevelopment agency was dissolved, a successor agency was appointed to wind down the redevelopment agency, pay its bills, all kinds of business to take care of. And they've done that through a successor agency and an oversight board. The city of Los Banos is not part of, see, if Los Banos is not the successor agency, it's a designated agency, local authority, excuse me, with an oversight board. And they have, they have come up with a plan of disposition of some of the properties that were formerly and currently part of the redevelopment agency. And those properties are on that map you see on your screen. The ones that are highlighted in yellow, orange, and blue are the properties that we're talking about tonight. There's a number of ways for the successor agency to dispose of those properties. They can dispose them, dispose of them back to the city for governmental use. That's the one category. Or they can transfer them back to the city for future development. That's a second type of use. Or they can sell them. So the ones we're, we're dealing with tonight are the ones that the successor agency and the oversight board is proposing to transfer to the city for governmental use and for future development. So in terms of governmental use, the properties that are being transferred to the city, which I'll go through them so you can see them on the maps. The city has to use those for governmental purposes for the next 20 years and is, does not have to purchase those properties from the successor agency and has no other obligation on those properties other than to maintain them for governmental purposes such as governmental building, a park, parking lot, so on and so forth. So those are the ones that you see up there in blue, I believe. And then in terms of future development, and I have slides that'll highlight these properties so you can see them better than that map. The future development properties, the city's then tasked with developing those properties in the future in accordance with the original redevelopment plan. And as to those properties, the city is essentially not the developer, but is in somewhat control of the disposition of those properties, but then must share in the disposition proceeds with the other taxing entities that are part of, that were part of the redevelopment agency, such as the county of Merced, the Los Banos Unified School District, the Community College District, the Cemetery District, Mosquito Abatement District, and the Central California Irrigation District. They all have an interest in the future development properties in that they get a predetermined tax share of the disposition proceeds upon development and sale. The largest share goes to the county of Merced. I think it's close to a third. The Los Banos Unified School District gets pretty close to 25% I believe. And then the city of Los Banos gets something akin to like 18%. And then the rest of the entities that I listed get smaller percentages all the way down to, I think there's one that's just even barely 1%. So in order for the oversight board to transfer these to the city or, excuse me, the, the successor agency, the redevelopment agency law requires us to enter into an agreement with all of those other taxing entities agreeing to not selling those properties, but agreeing to allow the city to develop those properties in accordance with the redevelopment plan. And upon development, typically to a developer who will come in and develop those, upon that sale to that developer, share those net proceeds of that sale with the other taxing entities. So the action we're asking you to do tonight is to approve at least the city's end of this. And after tonight, assuming you do approve it, we'll be circulating the document to the other taxing entities for their consideration and approval as well. We're hoping that they receive it and consider it and approve it, and we can be off and running here. So if you look at those properties up on that map, you'll notice they're primarily along the rail trail, which is what our redevelopment agency invested a significant amount of money in while it was going. There's one small property downtown that I'll highlight for you, and I'm gonna try to go through those for you one at a time. Just, I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but I want you to kind of. I'm not gonna take a lot of time, but I want you to kind of see their general location. So here we go. These would be the future development properties that we're gonna highlight for you in orange. That's the downtown one, and I think that one's on I Street, correct? It's next to the new restaurant that just opened.
Where we tore down the chicken coop?
There you go.
Okay.
So it's a bare piece of ground right now. And so that's gonna be one of the future development pieces and our obligation would be to develop that in accordance with the redevelopment agency plan, which is to revitalize the downtown, to cure blight, so on and so forth. And once we do that, and typically do that through a development agreement with a developer, the proceeds of the sale of that agreement will be split up amongst those taxing entities. So that's the first one downtown. The next one is along the rail trail, and I believe that one is, help me, Sonia, I think that one's across the street from the community center. Seventh and G Street. So it's that, it's that bare vacant piece of property as you're crossing the trail with the lit sidewalk across from the community center. And so
That would be the south side.
It would be, it would be the south side. Yeah, it would be the southeast corner.
Correct.
Sorry. Okay, so it's our obligation on that piece to develop it in accordance with the plan, share the proceeds with the taxing entities. The next piece is a little sliver piece, which has got a roadway easement on it, which I think is a future, help me, help me out, is it H? Knight Street? Don't anticipate that one being developed anytime soon. And if it is developed, it's subject to a roadway easement, so there you go. Same thing on the other side, and that one is a partial part, and that's where that big warehouse is sited on the other side of the rail trail. And we have a portion of that one, too. I don't anticipate either of those pieces being developed anytime soon. Who knows, you know, something could happen out there that the city abandons the easement and something happens, but we'll be in control of that. Going down the trail, here's the next, the next piece. You can see the trail is to the south of that piece. That one is next to that corner piece. Keep, keep going down. This one is getting closer to the courthouse and to our, the future site of the police station. So those are the ones we're gonna be required to market and develop in accordance with the, with the RDA plan. Then we're gonna get some properties for governmental use, and they're primarily along the trail. There's one right there. There's another one.
So, so go back to that. That is the, that would be to the east of the, of the plaza?
Yes.
Okay. So that.
So, so the corner piece we were talking about?
Yeah.
Is right, right?
Right next to it?
Right next to it.
Okay.
So that is just basically both sides of the trail.
Okay, alright.
And that's what these other pieces are gonna be as well.
And this is I Street over here, correct? Right, Seventh and I, is that correct?
It's between Seventh and where Ninth, the Ninth Street area would be, and it's in between G and H.
Okay. Okay, we're good.
There's another one as we get closer to the courthouse. Again, those are pieces that are straddling the trail. It's gonna be for governmental use. We have to maintain it as governmental use for the next 20 years in accordance with this agreement. There's a longer piece as we're getting closer to Mercy Springs. That would be immediately south of the, of the courthouse and the future site of the police department. And then there's a piece that butts up against Mercy Springs. So essentially, those pieces give us one continuous control over the rail trail from Mercy Springs to the community center. And then there is a piece that's separated, that's out by Ward Road. We don't, Union Pacific owns the piece in the middle between Mercy Springs and this piece. And this piece, again, straddles both sides of the, of the trail, the walking trail, all the way to Ward Road. So we'd be taking that one over as well for governmental use. So, so as you can see, they're all primarily surrounding the rail trail. They've been developed as part of that. That was part of the redevelopment plan. And so we will be accepting those and taking control of those for governmental use. Now, there are some other pieces that are kind of a hybrid. And they'll take a little bit of explanation. This, this piece is along the rail trail to the north of the rail trail at Second Street, I believe. Correct? And that piece is the old site of the Pacheco Oil Facility. And we are taking the part labeled A for governmental use and part B will then be used for future development. That is immediately south of that piece, and that straddles, again, the, it's an odd piece because if you'll notice, there's a really long piece to the south of it that has all of the frontage onto the roadway. This is wedged in between. And so we're, we're splitting this piece and maintaining what's called parcel A that's along the rail trail for governmental use, and then parcel B would be for future development. And probably in conjunction with the piece immediately to the south, which
And this is to the west of the, of the plaza, then?
Correct.
Okay, and that, and the street going south would be I Street?
That's H Street.
H Street.
H Street between Second and Fourth.
Oh, H, yes, okay, okay, I's one, okay, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's across the street from Paluso Cheese.
Yes, 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 yes. But there's frontage property there. It's already been sold, I think, already.
It's, it depends on who you talk to, whether it's been sold, whether it fell out of sale. What I, what I would anticipate is whoever eventually buys that piece is gonna be interested in piece B as well.
Okay, okay, got it.
Okay. So then here is the piece that you're interested in, and this is the, the piece where the site of the Henry Miller Plaza is. And so we will be dividing it into three. Parcel A is along the trail, so that'll be for governmental use. That long strip from basically the community center on up. And then the parcel B is the location of Henry Miller Plaza all the way to the corner. That piece will be retained for governmental use as well. And then parcel C will be, that will be for future development.
And where it says 500, that's where Four Paws, the, the boarding place is.
True, and then I think there's a roofing company on the corner there that's cut out there.
Yes.
So we will be trying to develop parcel C. We'll be maintaining A and B for governmental use for the next 20 years. After 20 years, we have no obligation. We can do anything we want with it.
So if parcel C were developed, then could, could parcel C entity develop parcel A as a parking?
No, because parcel, parcel A is the rail trail.
That's, and so
So what we would anticipate in marketing those would be to divide parcel C into maybe three parcels, each with different frontage.
Okay.
That's a pretty large parcel.
Yeah.
And it's kind of cut by that corner piece and it's cut by that, that piece in the middle there where the, the dog grooming place is. So I'd anticipate if maybe someone wants to develop the entire thing, but it may be something where it's divided into two or three and has multiple development going on there.
And if I remember from the, because I'm on the oversight board, these were cleaned up to a, a status of, of level two on
I think some of them were cleaned up and some of them didn't need cleaning.
Correct.
Cleaning up is what I understand.
But you cannot put residential on them. They aren't clean to that level, but they are clean to the commercial level.
That's correct.
Correct. Now, they will have to comply with our rail trail regulating ordinance that does, does allow for residential, but that'll be subject to further cleanup if they want to do that.
Okay, thank you.
It's not, again, it's nothing that the city is responsible for.
Correct. Yeah.
And I believe they've been cleaned up to allow for walking trail and a recreation area, though.
And, and, you know, a, a commercial level is what I was told, yeah.
Okay. These are the, these are the pieces way out on Ward Road that are on either side of Gilbert Gonzalez Development. Parcel C, you'll notice at the very bottom of parcel C, that's where the water tank is. And it straddles Ward Road, and then parcel A is to the west. And so the history of this parcel is the city contributed like $700,000 to the purchase of the entire parcel. It was one big parcel at one time. The redevelopment agency through its loan mod housing funds contributed about $500,000. And then after that, the parcel was split into three. And the redevelopment agency developed the middle portion there into the Gilbert Gonzalez Low and Mod housing developments. So in essence, they got, they got every, what they paid for, they, they basically have gotten. What the city's paid for is essentially C and A. So the, the city will be taking parcels A and parcel C for governmental use. And the way the math works out in terms of each contribution to this, it leaves parcel B for future development.
And C is our new fire station, isn't it?
Hopefully. For, for the regional
Regional training facility. I'm sorry, correct terminology.
True.
Alright.
So that clearly would be a governmental use and so on and so forth, so this is a little bit different in that we're proposing to split things based on their funding sources way back when. And so that'll take a little bit of explanation, I think, possibly to some of the taxing entities. But we've really spent a lot of time making sure that what we're doing is supported by what the city's contribution was to these properties that we're splitting here for governmental use. So those are the properties, and so the compensation agreement will be circulated amongst the entities. And if everything goes well, in 60 days, I'll report to you that everybody has signed. And at that point, the properties will be transferred to the city.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question about, I know you said that the blue and the yellow, they have, after 20 years, if they're not developed for governmental use, there's no
Okay, so, yeah, let me go backwards. The governmental use properties, we have to use for government purposes for 20 years. If we abandon those properties or decide we want to put them to some other use and we sell them, we have to share the proceeds with the other entities within the first 20 years. After 20 years, the agreement then indicates that we're no longer under any condition in terms of those properties and we can use them for whatever purpose we want. We could turn them from governmental use to some type of development, for instance, if we wanted to. I would anticipate the rail trail properties are probably always gonna be governmental use properties unless we were to abandon the rail trail. And frankly, if we abandon the rail trail, I'm not sure what you could develop on that trail. Because it really, it's just straddling the trail, literally. That would mean we would have to abandon the Henry Miller Plaza, for instance. I don't see that happening anytime soon. So we are under an obligation to keep them governmental use for 20 years, and that's to keep us honest and not just turn them over and pocket the money.
As for the, the orange, which is future development, I know that's depending upon the RDA use. But does that one have a, a, a date?
No, that, that is always gonna be encumbered by that obligation. The city will be obligated to use best efforts to develop those within a reasonable time to get a fair price for them within our redevelopment agency plans. And we have a regulating document for those properties. And we'll have to take a look at how we're gonna market those properties so that we can get someone to develop them in, in accordance with those plans.
Thank you.
So, so let me tell you, by us, it would, and this decision goes back, I think Mr. Freya and I were the only ones on the council at that time. And when we gave up the RDA, because basically it was, it needed to, to be turned over to the state. The state, what was left of the funds and the DLA, they paid for the cleanup. And thank God, we didn't get stuck with that. Because there was a tremendous amount of cleanup on these lots. And now they are clean to the level of a commercial level and, and it's, it was not the bill, we didn't foot the bill for it, so. And now we're getting these properties back. So it's, it's a good thing. It's a good thing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
Thank you. I didn't understand Councilwoman Santos's question because it was too soft. So I'm gonna ask this, Bill. I don't quite understand since I wasn't on council, and, and maybe I misunderstand, misunderstood your interpretation of the county, the school district and the special districts within our area being able to get X amount of dollars for property. Is, is that because, would that be if we sold it before the 20 years was up?
So let's go backwards. The redevelopment agency was designed to redevelopment proper, redevelop property through tax increments and through money that would have normally been distributed to those entities at the front side. And since it wasn't distributed to those entities at the very beginning and is, and is basically wrapped up in these properties, if we sell those properties, we have to share with them their proportionate share of what they would have gotten way back when in terms of their contributions. So in terms of the future development properties, which are the orange properties and some of the properties that I showed to you at the very end, those are always, always gonna be future development properties, and we have to share the sales proceeds from those with those taxing entities when we develop those. And I indicated, I hope you heard me, that the city would get 18%, I think roughly, and then the, the other two major taxing entities are the county and the school district. And as far as the governmental properties, we are, that was Mrs. Santos's question. We are, and there, and there is no time limit on that. That is a, a condition of us taking those properties. And it's whenever we sell those properties. As far as the governmental use properties go, we have to commit those to governmental use for 20 years, according to this agreement. And if we do something different with them within 20 years, like sell them, we have to share those sales proceeds with those entities as if it was a future development property. But after 20 years, the, the way the agreement reads is we're no longer any, under any obligation to share those proceeds from a governmental use property. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes, it does. Thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah, when the redevelopment agencies were originally formed, they took away tax share from those entities to form those redevelopment agencies. And so all of those entities kind of have a stake in these properties. And so that's what we're developing and reimbursing them back as well as ourselves. But not the governmental use properties.
So would it just be reimbursement on the sale, the sale of the property or the entire development itself?
So it'd be on whatever the financial compensation is for developing those properties by a third-party developer, whether it's through a DDA or an outright sale, whatever the net proceeds of that is, less the cost of the city marketing those properties and any other expenses the city might have in maintaining those properties. Until they're developed or sold, the net of that will be divided and the city would be reimbursed for its actual costs plus its share.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
The two of us, Mrs. Lewis, will be around 90 years old, so I'll give you a call, okay?
I'll see if I can remember.
Alright.
I, I would just indicate we've previewed this with the, the DLA's attorney, and she's on board with what we're doing as being consistent and she's on board with what we're doing as being consistent with the actions of the, the DLA. We have not reached out to any of the taxing entities as of now. We wanted to get, uh, the city council approval before we did that. So, I'm hoping to come back to you with a, uh, a document that's been signed by all the entities, but I may be coming back to you because we might have to make some modifications. One of the things I wanted to bring your attention to is the agreement that's part of your packet. Um, we've decided that the last two exhibits are better to combine them into one. I didn't have time to do that before tonight, so Exhibits D4 and D5 will be combined into one map. We think it presents what we're trying to do clearer than the two maps. So, we'll be making that change with your approval, but there's no textual change that changes the terms of the, of the agreement.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to adopt the resolution, uh, City Council Resolution 6188, estimated.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Jones, second by, uh, uh, Johnson Santos, for the approval of City Council Resolution Number 6188 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Lewis? Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanted to acknowledge Sonia has had a big part of putting this all together as well, and, and so we, we both thank you for your consideration tonight.
And all of us thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, two of you. Okay, motion, uh, anyone, uh, in opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, I am going to call for a, uh, I need my mic on. Uh, I'm going to call for a five-minute break, and, uh, we'll be back shortly, thank you.
Just remember Facebook Live is still off.
Okay.
Audio, audio as well?
That's correct.
I love this.
Yeah, we had like 180 viewers and then Bill started talking and going down the.
They went back up on it during the break.
Yeah, where? Where? Oh, yeah? Oh, I love dry jack.
Oh, they've got some good cheese, they've got good salami.
With, with, salami?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Are they open now?
Oh, no, no.
Good, you're talking about the rough one.
Ted Darnold has that walk-in.
Yeah. As a kid, I didn't know there was any other cheese but dry jack with the black, uh, covering on it. And no idea there's any other cheese. Okay, we are back. Mrs. Lewis, you still there?
I'm here.
Thank you. Okay, good, we're all back. Alright, let's go on to the new 10, formerly Item 9, now new 10. California Public Employees Retirement System, CalPERS, Contract Amendment as it pertains to the local safety members, police and fire, and cost sharing of pension. Uh, 10A, City Council Resolution Number 6189, intent to approve, intention to approve, an amendment to the contract between the Board of Administration, CalPERS, and the City of Los Vanos as it pertains to the local safety members, police and fire. And Item B, Ordinance Number 1183, authorizing the amendment and, uh, to the contract between the City of Los Vanos and the Board of Administration of CalPERS to implement Section 20516, employees sharing additional pension costs for local safety members, uh, police and fire. And the first one, Item A, is an action motion, and the second one is a first reading and introduction. Okay, who are we going to? Sonia? Oh, we're going to Lucy? Okay.
Alright, um, so this action before you tonight is in conjunction with, um, we're amending the CalPERS contract to reflect the current, um, labor agreements that we have with the Police Officers Association, the Sergeants Association, and the Firefighters Association, um, in regards to their pension and paying, um, 3% more cost share. So they're paying their 9% plus an extra 3%. And so this action is to formally change the 9% to a total of 12%. And CalPERS requires us to do this resolution of intent, and then we need to introduce the ordinance. And then I need to go to the eligible members for them to vote if they want it or not. And then, once that happens, I would bring it back to you for formal adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. Alright, um, so, uh, do we have any questions from, uh, council members at this time?
I do.
Yes, go ahead, Miss.
This change, where else have we already done that?
It's already happening right now, they're already paying the extra 3% of pension.
They are, okay.
Yes, it, um, they did a side letter agreement, but it's really not, you just can't do it quickly with PERS. There are certain things that you need to do, and so it's taken us a while to get what we need.
Okay, so by going forward on this, it's not changing anything that they're not already doing, right?
No.
Okay.
Hey, is there any other questions from council? If not, uh, uh, I need a, um, a motion and a second on Item A, and then I need a motion and a second on the first reading, then the introduction. Who would like to do that? Okay, go ahead. Okay, I'll have you, I, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, um, let's see, make a motion to introduce some, uh, Ordinance Number 1183.
No, no, let's go to the, let's go to the resolution. Let's go to the resolution.
Okay, so, uh, I'll, I'll recant that, and I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1189 as read by title.
No, 6189.
I'm sorry, um, I'll restate it, I'd like to make, uh, introduce, or make a resolution, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a resolution to adopt Ordinance Number 6189 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos for the adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6189. All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Okay, uh, anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, Mrs. Lewis, let's go to Ordinance 1183.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 1183 as read by title.
Okay, Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos for, to waive the first reading of Ordinance Number 1183. All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 1183 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motioned by Lewis, second by Santos for the introduction of Ordinance Number 1183. Director Maloney?
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yeah.
Volalta?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And, uh, thank you, uh, uh, who'd you say, Lucy, thank you. Okay, let's go on to Item 11, Adv- Advisory of Public Notices, One Report.
Um, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Councils. So the one item is, um, for the Rosco Group. This particular item is a tentative parcel map, a site plan review, and a conditional use permit, as well as a negative declaration for the development of two parcels, um, uh, at 1420, Espachaco Boulevard. Um, this would be to accommodate quick-serve restaurant drive-throughs for Chipotle and Dutch Brothers. Both of these items will be considered by the Planning Commission on March 25th at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. And that concludes my report.
Wow, keep them coming, thank you, Stacy. Alright. Okay, uh, any comment on Item 11? Okay, let's go on to Item 12, City Managers' Report.
Uh, just a reminder for the folks that might have been, uh, watching on Facebook Live, we will be responding to the questions, uh, via the Police Department Facebook page, uh, over the next couple of days. Uh, we've also, it's on my understanding, received a request, uh, to provide the comments to the council or read the comments to the council. Since we're past that item, uh, we'll go ahead and just summarize those comments and provide them to the council just so, uh, the council's aware of some of those questions we were getting.
Thank you, Alex.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Item Number 13, uh, Report Update on Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG and Measure V Committee. Well, the two big items are always going to be, we need to keep pushing forward on the, uh, the pioneer trail to make sure that we're in the loop for money now that we've started this process. And in about, uh, seven, eight months, we will have the, uh, what's the acronym again?
PSR, Project Study Report.
Project Study Report, which will show the route, it will show everything, and then we can sunshine that to the public to let them see, so we're keeping them in full loop. And, uh, and, and also for money and, uh, with Caltrans. And then the other one is the expansion of Billy Wright. Billy Wright is so imperative because that's for the existence of Los Vanos, Dos Palos, and, and Gustine, to make sure we always have a dump site for our, our trash, because the cost will be exorbitant if we have to, uh, truck it all to Highway 59. That's an additional 50 miles. And our, uh, our, uh, our relatives in Dos Palos and, and Gustine, they need access to this in order to keep their rates down, too. So, those are the two big projects, and I will continue and continue and continue to, uh, to talk about this. So, thank you. Let's go on to Item Number 14, City Council Member Reports. And tonight, we'll start with Mrs. Lewis. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Okay.
Thank you, can you speak?
Oh, wonderfully, no problem.
Okay, um, I have one announcement, uh, to make, um. I received a, a text, uh, with a announcement from the Los Vanos School District, and it states that children eat free, drive-through, and every child ages 1 through 18 will receive a meal to take home. Walk up or drive through to pick up the meals, all meals are to-go style, no identification required. Meals will be served at the following location. Creekside Junior High School, Los Vanos High School, Niano Elementary School, Espachaco High School, Los Vanos Elementary School, and Los Vanos Junior High School. And this is every Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Now, there will be no service during spring break, which will be March the 23rd through the 27th, and April 10th through April 13th. So I'm really happy that the school district is still participating to make sure that children who, uh, receive meals at school and any other children in our community can participate in these drive-through meals on a, on a Monday through Friday basis. Um, I, I'd also like to just make an additional. I'd also like to just make an additional announcement on this COVID virus that we're dealing with is if you have older parents or grandparents, make sure that they're doing okay and they have all their needs met. But if you can, please stay away. Particularly, don't bring children around if you can because they are the most vulnerable in the community for contracting this COVID virus. So, protect your grandparents and protect your older parents and this too shall pass at some point. Remember to keep your social distancing, which means six feet from someone. So, and, you know, no one's saying, "Don't go out for a walk in the park" or anything like that. Just make sure that you're keeping your social distancing while you're out in the community. And if you really don't have to go out, it's better to stay at home to keep yourself safe and to keep your family safe. And that's it tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. Okay. Let's go to Mrs. Santos.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So, just simple few comments on the- on what we're dealing with currently, the COVID. I would just like to recommend that everyone keep calm in the situation right now, also to stay safe. And just know that many people are looking for many of the same products, so I completely understand needing to have some for yourself and your families for a few days, a couple of weeks. But please understand that there are other people out there and please keep in mind to share these items as well. So, that's one thing I just wanted to say. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Santos. Mr. Jones?
No report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And just to elaborate again on what Mrs. Santos is saying, says, "We've always had enough supplies for everybody, always." And with the hoarding, there's never going to be enough. And we all know that. We have to exercise some common sense, please. And I would tell you that the Los Vanos we have today is the Los Vanos we'd like when this is over. So, shop local. Do whatever you can to spend your dollars locally and they'll do their best to get the supplies into you so you'll have a place to purchase them. And also, don't think we're neglecting any aspect of any age. And the school district has a wonderful plan for taking care of our schoolchildren and Alex and the county are- and the chiefs are working hard to make sure that our seniors are accommodated, to work on some shopping alternatives, and also some meals. So, we are- we don't have a plan in place yet. I will tell you that. Our city manager told me to stress that, but we should have some information coming out, at least on shopping first, for senior citizens and then possibly some other announcements later. And as we find the need for things in our community, we're going to try and address those. And so, again, be patient and if you have any concerns, please contact the sources that are listed. Look to the county website for your needs and our Facebook page. Would that be the fire or police or both for these?
Both are police and not.
Okay. Okay. The police department will be the kind of distributor of information and then fire department will follow suit. So, and then we have individual Facebook pages and I would say the information that's going to be pushed out is the information that we can give you. None of us on the council want to do any speculation because it's not right because if we say it, people might take it as the absolute truth. And we are going to be giving the information that we need to give and the information that is true and correct. So, if we don't answer emails about some of the question or Facebook pages about some of your questions, it's because we want to make sure that we're all pushing out the same information at the same time to give you the best information that we have. So, please understand that. So, with that, I would go- I would like to read the closed session items. Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency Designated Representative City Manager, Terazza. City Attorney Vaughn. City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney. Finance Director Williams. Legal Counsel Tufo. Employee Organizations, Los Vanos Police Office Association, LBPOA. Los Vanos Police Sergeant Association, LBPSA. Los Vanos Firefighter Association, LBFFA. Los Vanos Police Dispatches Community Services Officers Association, LBPDCSOA. And Los Vanos Public Employees Union, Public Works. Local 1/AFSCME. And Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And Item B, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation. Initiation of Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph 4, Subsection D, Government Code Section 54956.9. One potential case. If we have anything to report, we will do so when we return from closed session. Thank you and have a nice evening and thank you for joining us.